To the November 7th Planning Commission meeting. And we have some really exceptional news before we call the roll. And one is to welcome our new commission member, Mr. Anthony Whitfield. Good morning. And I'm just gonna tell the public here and online a little bit about yourself. And I'm gonna ask you, so you can think about it, maybe just say a couple of words. So today Anthony Whitfield was sworn in as the seventh member of the Cleveland Planning Commission. He brings decades of incredible experience, both private and public sector experience in building sustainable neighborhoods, business attraction, expansion, and retention strategies. He has extensive commercial real estate development, project management, and community revitalization. And he has a track record of leading and guiding very complex projects to completion, including expertise in retail plaza turnarounds, of which we see a lot of here. So he has an undergraduate degree in engineering from Cleveland State and an MBA from Baldwin Wallace. I've had the pleasure of knowing him for many years when he was at Fairfax, leading all the economic development there. And so excited to have him on the commission. It's just such an incredible kind of value add for us. And if you want to turn your microphone on, maybe have you say a few words.
Good morning, and thank you for those kind words. It's an honor to be a part of the Planning Commission. It's a bit of a surprise. And I will discharge my duties to the very best that I can and to strengthen this commission as well. And thank you.
Yeah, good. And he won't need to come up to speed much, to be honest. He used to come before this commission. He is expert. He can probably do circles around all of us. So he's probably one of the easiest onboarding we're gonna have since you've been here quite a bit in the past. So with that, before we get going, let's call the new role.
I'll start with the pre.
Oh, I forgot. Very important. So first we'll read the preamble, and then we'll call the role.
In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law and Section 101.021 of the Codified Ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the City Planning Department conduct their meetings in a manner modeled after Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Recusals from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that online participants use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and muting your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being live streamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter submitted through proper channels have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Proper channels for comments are listed below. Communication with members of this body must follow proper channels for consideration. Any comments received by the Wednesday noon deadline are collected by city planning staff and disseminated to the commission members prior to any scheduled meeting. Proper channels for public comment include sending an email to thecityplanning@clevelandohio.gov address with a comment or a letter, calling and/or leaving a message at 216-664-2210, sending a letter or dropping off comments at City Hall 601 Lakeside Avenue Suite 501, Cleveland, Ohio 44114. The meeting rules and procedures are that the chair will call each agenda item and then each applicant will be invited to proceed through their presentation. Each presentation should be completed prior to questions and comments from the commission in order to facilitate a smooth presentation. Once the presentation has concluded, the chair will ask planning staff to summarize Design Review Advisory Committee recommendations, if applicable, and any public comments received. Public comments received through the proper channels by the deadline are distributed to commission members prior to the meeting. Staff will also identify any members of the public present and scheduled to speak. Public comment is allowed at the discretion of the chair and any individual providing public comment is permitted two minutes to speak to the agenda item in which they have an interest. The chair will then request a recommendation from staff, if applicable. The commission will then begin deliberations and project review. Any commission member except the chair may make a motion at any point after an agenda item has been called.
Thank you. Call the role?
Anthony is not present. Fluker?
Present.
Curry?
Present.
McCray Scott is not present. Sargent?
Present.
Life? And Whitfield?
Present.
You're not last anymore. How do you feel about that? Yes. Wow. I'm sure that's rare. All right. Just so you know, we actually have, we'll need two separate motions on the minutes from the last meeting. And you'll probably have to abstain just because you weren't here. First is the October 17th, which is the last official meeting we had, or the one before the interim one. So first, can I have a motion to approve the October 17 minutes?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the October 17 minutes as presented.
Motion and a second, call the role.
Fluker?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Life? And Whitfield?
Epstein.
Motion carries. Next was the special meeting held on October 24th. We need to approve the minutes of the October 24th meeting.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the special meeting minutes of October 24th as presented.
Motion and a second, call the role.
Fluker?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Life?
Yes.
And Whitfield?
Epstein.
Motion carries. All right. First is a lot split and consolidation at 5111 Herman Avenue. This is permanent parcel 00310-029. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury? There you go. And if you just press that, the green button, then they can hear you online. That'd be great. Thank you. And you're Dave Smith, right?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, my name is Dave Smith. I'm a resident. I live at 5111 Herman Avenue. And I'm requesting a lot split this morning. Next slide.
They're leaning slow, just so you can fly.
No problem. Okay, cool. These are the items I was told to put together. It's the first time I've ever done this, so I hope this is okay.
But don't worry.
Not that hard, huh? Wonderful. Anyways, from what I understand, the two issues I have with this lot split are these two issues. The one is that the proposed lot is gonna be less than 4,800 square feet. And also, the proposed lot will have less than 40 feet of frontage. And those are the actual numbers there that we're, I'm proposing. Next slide. I live there now. I bought a house there in March of this year. Our plan is to build our forever home and keep the house in the back as a rental property for, to help generate income. I'm pretty close to retiring and I'm hoping to live here, age in place. I'm gonna, everything's gonna be handicap accessible and all that other stuff. And I am a disabled retired Army combat veteran, served in the Iraq War. And because of that, I also have access to a VA loan to build the house. And so one of the requirements for a VA construction loan is that you only have one dwelling or piece of property. And so that's one of the other reasons I'm requesting a split. Next slide. Okay, this is an aerial view. My property is number one there. If you look to the top, that's where the shoreway. So mine's number one. And then what it basically looked at is, you know, that there's four other lot splits that happened that were non-conforming, not only on my block, on my street. So the first one being all the way down the end of the right, which is, which basically that's lots, about the approximate lot sizes. It was done in 1997. And then four were done, number three, four, four lots were split up in 14. And then number four, all the way in the end of quarter, 49th and Herman, which is kind of similar to my lot split request. The lot was split into two pieces, and both of those are also non-conforming. And of course, most recent one, which is, doesn't have an address because it's still under construction, number five, which is basically, they took two buildings, two 50-foot lots, and sliced them up into five. And those are the square footage of those that were approved. So there's precedence that this has been allowed. Like I said, not only in my neighborhood, on my street and my block. So next slide. You can see the house in the back. That's where I live right now. And the plan is to do the lot split and to build a new house approximately in that footprint. Okay, next slide. These are just houses on my street that lots of us were approved for. So it's something, not, you know, what I'm doing is not anything out of, out of, out of the norm. Next slide. This is the lot split. Basically, what's gonna happen is, if you look at orientation here, on the right of the lot, we're basically going to split it with a quarter going to the back part of the lot. And, and the front part is gonna be a rectangular piece that the new house is gonna be built on. If you go to the next slide, you could see it a little easier because of color here. This right now is what we're thinking about having our house look like, which is very, very fitting for the neighborhood. But this is a little easier to look at the lot split here. Basically, the green slash rectangle is where we're proposing to build a house. We're gonna relocate the drive over to the, to the original parcel, if you would, and split that up. So it's just a rectangular split with the frontage remaining that's on Herman Avenue.
Will that be a permanent easement?
Yes. Usually, we're gonna do a front-load garage. We know, we know that that's not very popular. So we, we are planning on having a side-load garage, as you can see there in the, in the, in the little drawing, a little elevation, on the west elevation. And there'll be an easement granted that. So in the future, if for some reason I didn't own both parcels, that you still have access to the drive, or to the garage. Great question.
Brushed it on?
Yeah, it's not very, it's not a very good representation of it. But yes, it is.
The, this gets approved? If this gets approved, the director will, before she can sign up on it, will need to see the permanent easement, even if you still own both parcels. It's just a requirement that we have. But any questions? This won't go through design review, will it?
It would be the step, administrative for the design.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the lot split as presented with the, with the understanding that he's creating two non-conforming lots due to lot size and lot width. I have a second.
With the easement coming to staff?
Be careful.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Before we vote, I'll just say thank you for staying in the city and investing in the city and for your service. I think that's phenomenal. And great to be able to use the loan product that you, that you're using. So, so thank you for that. Really, it's great. And honestly, the idea of having the front lot, which was, kind of looked vacant because the other one was behind, this is also just an enhancement.
It does have that missing tooth look.
It has a missing tooth look anyway. And so this enables that. That's actually a really great thing. So that's my opinion. So call the role?
Fluker?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Life?
Yes.
And Whitfield?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations. You're gonna start soon?
Well, I'm gonna give my plans approved, so.
They're, they're really fast. You'll be surprised.
Are they really?
Yeah.
Awesome. All right. Well, thank you.
The next one's Near West Design Review 2025-020, Witch Doctor signage. This is at 3314 Broadview Road. This will require some explanation of what, what this is. I'm just kidding. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And you must be Charlie?
Yes, I am.
Okay, welcome.
Hello, my name is Charlie Eby. I am the owner of the Witch Doctor Bar, which will be coming very soon to Old Brooklyn. The next sign here are, I'm just hoping to get, I'm looking to make a sign for my business. And I thought it might be an interesting and kind of good-looking way to make a sign, to have it be a nice mural on this blank side of the building. It faces towards the road, so it'd be just a good sign in terms of visibility. And I think would just add a lot of beautification to the building itself. You can see on the side there, this square is where it will be. That's just a primer mark for, to prepare the spot. I'm, yeah, I agree to pay for any maintenance of the sign to make sure that it continues to look good. That's in both my business's interests and in the neighborhood's interests. So I definitely want to make sure that it's not, you know, getting weathered. See in the next slide there, there's a, that's the proposal. That is our logo. And that is a mock-up of what it could look like. We do intend to also have it wreathed in some greenery, some vines and leaves and things going around it, just as a bit of a framing. Yes, this was approved by the local council.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. This is Xavier from City Planning. The sign actually, we were like, actually expecting this to need variances because there's also an awning sign on the frontage of the building that they're also gonna propose. But we later received information that that's gonna be a future project. I guess that permits are gonna come in the future for the awning in the front. So currently, they actually don't need any variances for the signage that you're seeing on the left side of the building. So this could actually be administratively approved. for, because it doesn't need any variances. But what you're going to see next is going to be actual, actual art mural project with, where Tara will have some comments going around this signage. So I.
Should we see both? Are they back to back? Yeah, we should.
They're back to back, but the art mural portion is not connected to the actual business signage.
Right, but this is design review. It's not for signage. So is Tara here? Oh, there you are. Do you have the slides by chance? I mean, do we just like to see the whole?
Sure.
Is that next on the agenda? Oh, here it is, actually. So that's why we're going to see them both. We'll have to have separate motions, but.
I was told I needed to list them as separate items. And that's why there's two.
So I do think we should see them both. Two zero two five dash zero one seven. For your, well, in the end of the day, we are going to see entity both separate motions, but we're going to just see them together today. This is at three three one four Broadview. This is the actual mural on the same wall. This also got final approval, but it had a few conditions if you want to look about the color. So go ahead, Tara.
I was going to reserve my comments for the end and just go ahead and turn it over to the artist, Eileen Dorsey, to go through her slides.
Okay. Is she here?
She's online.
Is online.
All right. Eileen, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury? Doesn't look like anyone is on. Where is everybody? Normally, you can see them.
Eileen, if you are able to unmute. She's definitely logged into the meeting, but perhaps is not able to talk.
Do you mind showing it a little bit, Tara? I think we should continue. Go ahead.
Is a well-known local artist. These are some of the other projects that were part of the Old Brooklyn Blooms mural project through the neighborhood. She's got a bunch of community support on, on these different murals that she's done. And we can go on to the, the next slide. This is just some examples of her previous mural work. And this is the existing condition of the front of the building. The owner went ahead and primed the building before going through the approval process, which is backwards. But needless to say, that's the existing condition on the front facade. You can go to the next slide. And this is the proposal from Eileen Dorsey to do the front of the building. The Witch Doctor that you see there is the awning that Xavier referred to. It's not on the building right now, but that's what they're planning to put on the building and will have to come back for. The mural is approximately twenty-two by sixteen, although they are doing the black background up the entire facade. You can go to the next slide.
Tara, I was able to unmute.
Okay, good. You take it from here.
Thank you so much for taking over. I don't know why I couldn't, it wasn't working. But, uh, yeah, so, uh, thank you all for having me.
Can I, um, Tara, sorry, I mean, can, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes, actually.
There you go.
It was muted. Uh, so, so here is the, the design. And you can see that everything would look like with the existing, or around the signage portion that we just proposed. I think that it adds like a really nice, it, it makes it look a little bit more of like a more cohesive design, adding the surrounding wreaths around the, the signage. I think she went through all of it. I think that was a whole application. I didn't really get to present that one.
I do have a question, though. I don't understand the, the why, first of all, I'm okay with it. I like it. So I like the design. I actually think it's kind of interesting. And so that's, I'm just not sure about the technicality. Like a mural that is a sign, why, like, and plus there's an awning sign. It doesn't matter how they come about. This is one project. Like, it's okay, but shouldn't it require a variance?
Right. So from our understanding, the, the mural is actually separate from the signage because it's not necessarily connected to like business identification or selling of products that are going on in the property. So the, the portion of this project that's considered business identification signage is going to be the painting that, that says Witch Doctor and the head, you know, and like kind of their logo that's underneath it. But, but not the foliage or like leaves that you see there on the, on the actual mural.
Ask it a different way. The name of the business is The Witch Doctor. The sign is an awning sign and a mural sign that is a business sign. And I'm fine with it. I actually like it. I'm not against it. I just want to make sure we're procedurally, if another business had another building and put their sign on two sides and called them whatever, they're signs, right?
Right. And so like we, we aren't including the portion of the signage that's on the front of the building on the awning because there's not, like those, those measurements haven't been received yet. And it seems like that's going to come in a later permit. So.
And when the awning does come back to us, that will require a variance because that's additional signage from this space.
That, that's helpful. But, but your intention is to have the awning sign too, correct?
Yes, the, the awning will also say Witch Doctor on it. It will likely look very similar to that, the mock-up on the picture there.
Why are we going to see this again? Why didn't you just give the variance now?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, I believe that was communicated. I mean, if we, if we had the measurements of the signage that's on the front of the building, I could quickly run a calculation. We could, it's already on the agenda, so we could.
And we could do it administratively because like we're going to make them come back if we approve it for just some measurement. Anyway.
Let me ask for just kind of a thing. I think the main reason is because these are both being done by Eileen Dorsey as painting on the wall, so that we can kind of present it together. The awning is being done by Cleveland Awning. And so since they're like a different company, I believe they were handling a lot of their own permit kind of stuff as part of the business process. So, and I kind of have Eileen's stuff that I'm doing now, and Cleveland's awning will do their own approvals. I think the problem is, in my mind, procedurally, how do you approve something that's not defined?
We could just have to go to staff.
But it still requires our approval. So we're like sort of turning a blind eye to what my out, the outcome might be. And we're going to be responsible for approving something that would, you know, we don't know if it's a variance for ten square extra feet or, and I, that's why I think it gets dangerous. Trying to prove something that's not defined. To, I agree with Xavier, in my opinion.
I, I agree with you, August. I think a specification would be very helpful.
Yes, so at this point, I think we can't really make a variance for the awning because we don't have those specifications. So we're only voting on the side sign, and the awning will come back with a variance later.
That is my understanding as well, is that there will be just a, a third vote.
I just tend to err on the side of like logic here, but, okay. So can we have a, we'll, we'll need separate motions for first, the mural sign, and then a second mural, which, yes.
Through the chair, I'm sorry. So just to make the distinction, the one on the side facade is by definition a painted sign. And then the one on the front of the building, which doesn't have any of the business identification, is considered an outdoor work of art. And then the Northwest Design Review, well, I'll let you guys do the signage first, and then I'll write some murals.
So let's start with a discussion of two zero two five dash zero two zero on page four, which is the Witch Doctor signage, which is on the side of the building. Any discussion?
I think it's very difficult for me to, to talk about that without not talking about the mural.
I know, we just need a separate motion.
I, but I'm not ready to make a motion because I would like to make, I have a couple comments, if that's fine.
Go ahead.
First and foremost, Tara, you know how I feel about design review telling people what colors to make their murals and what to do. Think it's off, out of bounds. And so, so therefore, it's a work of art. And, and, and I don't know why designer reviews feel compelled to drive into that lane. Because I think it's inappropriate. It says recommendation of toning down the color. That's the hardest responsibility. I'm talking about the mural.
Sign you're talking about?
I don't know. It says, it's on the mural. I can't look at this totally.
I don't agree with that on the mural. I, I.
It says recommendations of, of turning down the color on the brick pilasters or finding a color that matches the existing brick. I think that's totally off, out of bounds.
Oh, they were talking about the architectural features on the building because it had already been painted before it was even seen to be approved.
So what do they, I, I need to understand what that means.
Clarify that they approved without conditions. This is just a suggestion from local. So it was not a required condition from them.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, so they, yeah.
All right. So the, the second thing is sort of piggybacking on what Madam Chair person pointed out. I, I think it looks like a duck and it sounds like a duck. It is a duck. So I think this interplay between mural and, and signage is a little foggy in my mind. And totally, you know, if, if it's okay with planning stuff, I, I understand. But I think it's a little, little foggy when, when we make that distinction, distinction. And I think we have to be careful as we consider this. And I'm not saying we're going to disapprove it, but we're setting a precedent. That's really what I, I have concern about. So I had my say. I don't know if anyone else has, like, no pine.
Shannon raised her hand on.
Okay.
Shannon?
Good morning, Commissioner. Shannon Leonard, Chief Zoning Administrator. So I, I agree with you, August, in that it, it's kind of foggy now that they're being presented together. The issue is that when this first came in, it came in with the artist without any indication that it was going to be related to the Witch Doctor signage and branding. And so that's how the, how Xavier and I think Tara proceeded without realizing that it was going to be kind of implemented into the wall mural sign that is on the side of the building. But it, it does, you know, once you start merging those two together, it really does become more like branding and less like art. So I just wanted to give you some of that clarification.
If I may add in, my understanding when I, you know, was kind of trying to plan all this out, was that there, you become signage once you put your logo and name on it, and that has a different kind of thing. So that's why I separated out the, the logo and, and name and everything, which would be a sign on the side of the building as compared to the artwork, which was floral and as you can see, more, you know, greenery and things like that, as a separate proposal, since that didn't have the name and everything. We have since tied in the leaves wreathing around it to make it look better, to make it aesthetically more pleasing, and that does blur the line. But I was, I was told that, you know, it changes it depending on whether you have your logo and name. And I wanted the logo and name on the side, but I also wanted the mural on the front. I was told they count as different things. I've submitted them as different things. I do apologize for the confusion. I'm just trying to stand up to the bureaucratic rules, make sure everything's, you know.
This is my point. Like, you're trying to make an investment. It's actually quite nice. I'm glad that they're actually not separated things and they look there. You're trying to connect them, to be honest. So I, I honestly don't want this to become, to get to the point where we get so bureaucratic about it that we're not saying, like, does this make sense? Is it a good thing for the neighborhood? I think it is. I, you know, I think, I'm glad they're actually being presented together. I'm glad that they didn't come in two separate meetings because we wouldn't have been able to understand them. It is, you are in a bit of a gray area with this technicalities. But I think we should, this is my point. I think we should be logical about it. So even though we have to do them in separate motions because you are trying to invest in the city, so.
Oh, I, again, I'm not criticizing your commitment to the city. What, what, what I'm trying to understand from a procedural standpoint is, is this all a sign now? Even the artwork, because you're, you're doing this. It's just like this, they're inextricably connected now, in my opinion. And that's what I'm, I, I can't get my head around. And then I, again, not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to understand if we're setting a precedent here. I suppose the dividing line could be they are in different faces of the building. So the two approvals would be for the different faces of the building. One face having a sign on it, the other face having a mural on it. They're, you know, the corner, so they're right next to each other. But that is a, a line of separation that could be clearly delineated. All right. I, I do understand the frustration. It does, it does muddy the waters, and I apologize for that.
I mean, I think what we really are understanding is we can approve both of these things the way they're presented, based on the two separate. We, we absolutely can. There's no gray area. I think you know that in doing this, then we're going to approve it. We're going to go to, for a variance to get the awning sign when you come back in. And that is what Xavier's saying. Then that, that will actually trigger, there's too much signage by the codes. You're going to need a variance. And we'll go through the process. I think we should just be eyes wide open. Do we like it? Are we going to, we know that's coming back. And we'll have to figure out the technicality. These are technicalities.
Well, I'm not, I didn't say I didn't like it. This is my point.
I understand. It's not about understanding. It's about the, they're trying to shoehorn something into a procedural process that doesn't quite fit. And we're here to say, does this make sense? Does it set a precedent? It doesn't, because they have separated it out. And go ahead, Tara.
I have a question. Can we go back to the slide that shows the existing conditions? Because I think one thing that would help separate it is if the architectural details on the corner of the building aren't painted. Oh, they're already painted. Because I was going to say you could separate them that way, but it.
We don't need to do that. I think that would.
No, I think, I like it, sort of morphing around and sort of merging. It's interesting. It's wrapping the building. It's responding to context. I, I get all that.
Right.
The artwork's beautiful. Smart comment.
Ben, what would you like to do? We do, do you need to take these separately?
Sure.
So, excuse me, Madam Chair. So I guess if we, if we're considering this all signage, the total square footage of both sides of the building like would be one hundred seventy-eight square feet? Is, so we're not doing that? Okay.
We are not doing that. We are not, we are not doing that.
Yeah. So we're just seeing it separately.
Any, any, any further comments? I'm going to make a motion to approve item number under Near West Design twenty, Witch Doctor Design signage as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Whitfield.
Yes, yes.
Motion carries. The next one, seventeen.
Thank you.
Wait, we haven't done yours yet. Two five dash zero one seven. So do we have a motion on the mural?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve NW two zero two five dash seventeen, the Old Brooklyn Blooms mural project.
I have a second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
And Whitfield.
Yes.
Motion carries. And we are noting that that was just a recommendation for the changing color. You don't have to do it.
May I make an inquiry, Madam Chair? No. What the heck does Witch Doctor do? Bath cocktails. Okay. Big herbal focus, a lot of custom kind of creations in it. That is alchemy. Yeah. Come stop by. It's, it'll be fantastic drinks.
And I meant what I said. Thank you for your investment. And unfortunately, we're going to see you again for the, for your, for your sake. See you again for the, for the variance when you're ready with the sign company. So we'll make it easier that time. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next item is Northeast Design Review, two zero two five dash zero one seven. This is Wade Park Station. We have seen this before for, when it was in design development. It is here for final approval. And you can see on your agenda on page six that there were four kind of recommendations. They were called conditions. Will you address those while you're, do you know what they are?
Yeah.
And you can address them so we can see those. And do you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
All right, take it away.
So my name is Winston Hall. I'll be representing RDA and Walwick Development for the presentation. If it's okay, I. Uh, if it's okay, I just kinda wanna skip through the first, kind of the context to kind of get through the, um, the main design. Yeah. So if you keep going, keep going. Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I'll, I think the left one is probably the fastest.
Yeah.
Uh, this, it's a different, yeah.
Different presentation.
Sorry about that, man.
This is the older one?
Yeah, this is, yeah, we, this is not why we presented. Uh, we submitted a new, newer form.
Yes, unfortunately, pick the next item and come back. This one.
Okay. So, okay. Yeah, that's fine.
I, I sent this to you, but you would go at the end. No, I'm just kidding. We'll do, they're just demolitions. We'll do some demolitions. Cause those are great. We got two demolitions. Um, two, two, nine, nine, east 103rd Street. Um, and, um, there are two, you need to recuse yourself, correct? And the second one, we do need separate motions is two, two, three, oh, three, each 103rd. Um, they will be presented together. Um, and I wanna note that Commissioner, um, Fuquer is recusing himself. And is Krista here to present these or online?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Curry, I am online.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer the penalty of perjury?
I do.
And, um, you'll show us both of these items and then we'll act separately.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also wanna, um, share my appreciation for you guys still offering the hybrid option here. Um, I had every intention of being there in person today. Um, but daycare had other plans for us today, um, with a, an illness in her classroom. Um, so she is home with me. So, um, so thank you. Um, and so I'm gonna go ahead and present the two demolitions here. Um, this is in preparation for the upcoming phase of Innovation Square. Um, that is a neighborhood plan you may remember we developed and was adopted by this commission a couple of years ago. Um, this is at, this is on east 103rd Street. Um, it's right just behind Opportunity Corridor. These are kind of the last kind of remaining, uh, buildings that are on the site that will need to be cleared. Um, and you can see them, uh, they're, they're in the southwest corner of the property. Um, so the first, the first, um, 2299, uh, is the building there on the left. Um, you can see, uh, so these were some photos that were taken during the, um, kind of environmental review process, uh, to, when Fairfax was able to get ownership of them. Uh, you can see they're in pretty rough condition when they, when they acquired them. Um, there's not a lot of value here, um, kind of worth saving or restoring. Um, and then you can see 2303, this is the right building. Um, this is the front and the sides as much as you can see it. Um, this one's in even rougher shape. It's been vacant much longer. Um, so, you know, we're generally just the typical scope of demolition. We're gonna remove the structure, all the foundations of the pavement on the site, take all the debris out, backfill clean, um, and seed and straw the entire lot until we're ready to move forward with the development. Um, and then the next couple of slides just kind of outline a little context. Um, where these sit kind of in the grand scheme of the master plan. Um, you can see here that phase two is directly south of the phase one building. Um, this is, um, some excerpts from the neighborhood plan that Fairfax has been diligently working towards. Um, with the development, um, you're familiar with the Meyer Market Building, the Medley Apartments, the Aura, Playwright Park. Um, so they have been working very hard at, um, reinvigorating this part of the neighborhood. If you can proceed, uh, just an aerial image to show, uh, where on the site those proposed demolitions are in relation to the rest of the site. The existing context, uh, Aura to the north on the top of the page, Playwright Park. Um, some existing houses. This is just a conceptual site plan that we're working with, um, as we're pursuing the funding stack. Uh, so this is gonna be the general layout. We're, we're looking at fronting the building on Hudson and East 105th, kind of a mirror to phase one. And, uh, those buildings are kind of in the way of this, the site development. Um, some conceptual elevations, subject to change. Um, and just a rendering there. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um, any questions? And as I said, um, we will start with the first one, which is two, zero, two, five, dash, zero, three, four on page seven.
I will move approval of the demolition of 2299 east 103rd.
I'll second that motion.
In a motion in a second. Any other comment? Call the roll.
Fuquer is recusing. Curry?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slife?
Yes.
And Whitfield.
Yes.
And I will also move approval of the demolition of 2303 east 103.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion in a second. Call the roll.
Uh, Curry?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slife?
Yes.
And Whitfield.
Yes.
Motion carries. Um, we can bring Mr. Fuquer back. Uh, do we have the presentation?
Yes.
There you go. Um, we're going back to, uh, uh, two, zero, two, five, dash, zero, one, seven, Wade Park Station. I do not need to re swear you in, so, uh, go ahead. Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
It might not, it won't, I'll have to click.
So, yeah, we'll just kind of jump to the, uh, site constraint, um, page. Yeah, keep going.
Keep going?
Yeah, uh, this is it. So, um, oh, sorry. Yeah. So, so after the conceptual design, you know, we went back, you know, look at the site, you know, there's some concern, uh, with grading. And we talked, we, we talked to, uh, Cleveland, um, Cleveland Power and, uh, First Energy. And we discovered that there's two major, um, easement that's on our site currently, so that we cannot, you know, remove. Um, so the first one is, if you see in the dotted yellow line, that's the, uh, a, a guy wire. That's currently in the middle of our site. That's, uh, supporting a high voltage transmission, um, a pole on the other side of the train track. So then that created a twenty foot easement, um, within that sort of a no built zone. Um, and then the other, um, easement that's at, currently at the front of the, uh, Lakeview Road, that's also another, uh, high voltage line that's cutting across the front of the site. Um, that's creating a thirty-six feet easement, um, you know, in the front of the site. So with, with these two constraints and also the, um, the topography slope from Lakeview all the way down towards the end of the Wade Park, we have a roughly ten to twelve foot slope. Um, so these are kind of the new, uh, discovery of what we've seen on site. Um, that kind of forces to, to kind of redesign and rethink about the, uh, the, the intent of the, the design. Uh, next. So again, uh, looking at the conceptual site plan, you can see that, you know, the, clearly the two, uh, two easements that's cutting, cutting through our conceptual site plan. So we, we're forced to redesign the, the, the building. And to maintain that, to still maintain that tw- uh, forty units, um, plus amenity, uh, we were forced to, you know, to work around. And then we, we talked to the zoning official. We were able to, to bump the, the, the building up additional story to, to ma- still maintain that forty unit, um, design concept. And kind of working with the grading, we were able to design a building that's, you know, partially three story. Uh, we slope up towards Lakeview. It turns it, uh, from four story to a three story building. Um, uh, you, you'll be able to see that in the later slide, but, um, we were able to work with the zoning official. And to deem the Lakeview as the frontage of the building. Um, with the thirty foot, um, setback line, uh, we were able to push the building back additional thirteen feet to bump up that additional one story, uh, in terms of height. And we're still within that zoning of, um, uh, in that zoning, uh, maximum height of fifty feet. So if you go to the next slide, what you'll see, kind of the before and after of, before, the conceptual, it's kind of the conceptual elevation. So we'll shrink down the building and still maintain the same concept of the design. But then with that zoning, uh, um, step that we're able to, it up, additional floor. Yeah.
We, we, we did it. It was the same.
Yeah, it worked, it worked out in our favor. Yeah.
Yeah. It was, it was a difficult site to begin with, with the narrow width of it and the train tracks behind it. And then got became.
Yeah.
That's Winston's. Redefining what our frontage is, is.
Quick, quick fire, though. Yeah. Next slide, please. So, yeah, looking at the existing condition, you see that, you know, the, the big grade change from, from Lakeview to Wade Park and the, the two, two easement up front, uh, and the, the guy wire. And next. So the current site plan, you know, still, we're still maintaining that forty unit plus amenity. Um, still holding that twenty-fourth, uh, twenty-four parking spaces. Uh, still, still again, uh, same design concept with the three different entry with, you know, with the narrow site. We have a, a parking lot entry that's off of parking on Wade Park, a pedestrian entry off of Wade Park. And then the, uh, the pedestrian entry off of Lakeview with the, uh, the four hundred square feet of, uh, public spaces with two hundred covered. Uh, you'll see that kind of in the later rendering, uh, next.
That patio is a, a tax credit requirement.
Yeah.
The, the Ohio Lytech credits.
Uh, next. So again, looking at the landscape, uh, plan, uh, you know, we emphasize on that experience that walk from Wade Park to Lakeview for the residents. And then also that, um, you know, that space between our building and, and train track, that kind of emphasis with, you know, a lot of vegetations. And then with the slope, you know, we have to put in some retaining wall, but then that kind of works with, with the landscape in the back, uh, of the building. Uh, next. Again, some landscape details, you know, we're providing, you know, seating and, and trash can at the, uh, the patio space off, uh, out towards Lakeview, that corner. And then.
That previous slide is probably a good place to mention responding on the sidewalk access to the design.
Yeah. Um, there is a rendering, but, um, the, sure, I, I'll just keep going and I'll, I'll explain that in the rendering. Uh, next. Uh, again, some site lining, um, you know, provide, you know, landing on the, on the parking lot and also the, uh, the front uh, Lakeview entrance and also the, that parking lot entrance with the service. Uh, next. Uh, some, um, site lining on the elevations, um, you know, downlights at the entrance, you know, wall pack and wall sconces at the, uh, at some of the aesthetics. Next. So again, going through floor plan, you know, with the shrinkage of the building, this is the first floor. I know there's only two units plus amenity. And then service, and as you move up, uh, next slide. And then the, uh, second and third and fourth floor, um, you know, that extend the full length of the site with the, uh, thirteen units on the second and twelve, um, on the upper, on the second and then thirteen on the upper level. Uh, looking at elevation massing, still maintaining that design concept with, you know, using different materials, using brick, vinyl siding, corrugated steel metal. You know, see that dotted line with the separation of, you know, in elevation and, and height. And then using corrugated steel metal in the vertical to kind of break out the massing. And then you see that purple? Uh, that's the, uh, the setback of the entry to kind of help to break out the massing. And then you see that blue, yellow and red, that's kind of the, uh, design element of wayfinding to kind of emphasize that entry, which you'll see in the, uh, later, uh, rendering. Uh, next. Uh, so look at the, uh, the Wade Park elevation. You see that the three color kind of emphasizing the entry point. And they see that, that walk, the soap up towards, from Wade Park towards Lakeview. And various use of, usage of material to break out the, uh, the facade. And then, like, thank you, uh, so the, that's the, uh, the Wade Park pedestrian entry. Uh, you see that different, um, usage of material. Uh, Lakeview Road entry, you see that, um, the outdoor patio space that, that, that's kind of elevated up into that corner. Um, and then also the, the south, uh, lot entry. And then the, uh, the east elevation is, you know, that's facing the train track. That's a little bit muted. So these are some of the materials that we're using. Oh, sorry. I looked too fast. Sorry. So some of the material we're using, you know, with the, um, the three different color of, um, over cement panels at the entry and then more of a muted color and white and gray for the, uh, the vinyl. Uh, next. So we did three different, uh, section cut of the kind of studying the site as we move up from Wade Park towards Lakeview. So the first section cutting through that four story building with the, uh, the kind of the relationship between the streets and the adjacent, um, residential housing, uh, next slide. And as you move up, um, you kind of go into that three story, um, between that four and three story, uh, section. And then there's open field on the, across the street in the next slide. And then you'll see that, uh, the three story portion with that, you know, thirty-six feet easement up front. And then the, the half bakery across the street. You see that relationship, uh, next. So here are some of the renderings. The first rendering is, you know, is kind of looking at from Wade, Wade Park. Uh, that parking lot entry, uh, parking lot entry and then the pedestrian entry. So the, uh, one of the comments is kind of providing a secondary gathering space off, off of that, this parking lot and pedestrian corner, which we have provided underneath that, that entry. And then also adding, so before we, we didn't have that, that cutting kind of cross from the pedestrian walk to the entry. And, you know, that's a suggestion that, you know, people's kind of, you know, instead of looping around, they can go directly to the entry. So that's a, you know, we implement that, uh, the sidewalk. Uh, next. And then kind of the experience after you, as you walk up towards Lakeview, uh, towards Half Bakery, you see that in the pedestrian entry providing seating. And then if you go up the next slide, that, that corner presence of that, uh, that four hundred square feet of patio space. And then another planning commission comments is kind of emphasize that experience as you walk up towards Wade Park. Because of that level change, uh, we have a bit of brick exposed at that, that split level. So kind of just introducing more vegetation to kind of soften that corner, which we end, we, we, we end in adding more, more vegetation at that corner to kind of soften that and kind of emphasize that corner presence. Yes, yes. Yeah. So that's a, yeah, that's a frontage of the building. So, so yeah, right underneath that. Yeah. So that, the blue, yellow and the red, that's kind of, that's right, right next to the entrance. That's kind of what's, you know, emphasizing that entrance experience.
Um, I'm, I'm, I've been a big proponent of this and I'm gonna sound like a broken record. Um, because I'm a walker. I try and walk two to three miles a day. And the challenges I have when snow is on the ground, my neighbors don't shovel their walks and, and in most urban environments, you can't walk. Is there a way to create like a nice path on this site? That people can sort of circulate around the parking lot and maybe around the building and, and create an environment where they can actually get their cardio in and not be challenged with having to walk in the street? Because essentially that's what happens in the winter time in a city.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we can certainly look at, you know, options of, because there's a significant grade change between the building and the, the train track. So it might be challenging to, to add a path in the back.
I, I think that the concern might be too, is that the the, our units that are on the backside that are facing the tracks have, I don't know that we want to encourage folks to, to walk there where those windows are, are close to gray.
Let's go to the parking lot. Is there a way to create a loop around the parking lot? I mean, you already have pavement. Just a thought. It's, it's, it's a thought. I'm not asking you to do it. What I am asking you to do is consider.
Yeah.
It.
Okay. Yes, but, yeah, the site.
Pretty tight along the property line. Okay, well, this is a tight site. I, just a thought.
Yeah.
Just a thought. Thank you.
Question. I know, I was like, I was like, I think it got better and better and better. Uh, we went from like, uh, townhouses facing, uh, remember, uh, rail to.
With your autocorps.
To this. And I actually think, um, it, um, I like the design and I think it, um, really, really wanna enhance this area. And, and to be honest, it might drive some of the additional development that will come from this. And so thank you, um, for the care.
Yeah. Gives a fresh look.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very much.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve NE, uh, twenty twenty-five, uh, seventeen, Wade Park Station as presented.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second is for final approval. Um, call the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Congrats.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Very exciting. Um, next we're jumping to page nine, two zero two five dash zero four one, Dollar Bank sign. Um, is Jack here? Um, you have, you're, we, you're welcome. What's your name?
My name is David.
Dave. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you show to answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Just press that for the green button. This was, uh, recommended for final approval with a condition. If you want to take a look at it about the logo being moved higher, um, in, in that location. Um, so you could address that. Thank you.
Good morning, uh, Madam Chair. I also, uh, have a legit sign presentation for you here.
Legit. I like it.
So, so I'll start off with just announcing how much variance they need from the sign code and then I'll hand it off to the project team to describe more about their project. Um, as you know, this project is located at, uh, five one five Euclid Avenue, proposal for Dollar Bank signage. Uh, the applicant is, uh, proposing some wall and window signage. Um, this property is located in a general retail business district, uh, just east of the square. Um, um, just west of East Sixth Street. Here's the aerial, just to give you a, a better view of the neighborhood. And so as you know, this, uh, kind of corridor of Euclid has a lot of interesting signage just across the street. You have, uh, the bowling alley that has projecting pin signs, uh, further down the street is, uh, Playhouse Square with some more digital ribbon signs. And basically you're seeing this today to determine, um, if the proposal, uh, meets specific criteria. And that's design compatibility, design guidelines and minimum variation from the zoning code. And so the proposal here is for a total of a hundred sixty-two, a point three square footage of, uh, wall and window signage. Uh, so the variances required here are seventy-nine point eight square feet. Uh, and so basically the next square footage of signage is determined off of the linear frontage that the unit actually, um, takes up on, on Euclid. And so that's kind of the main reason why you're seeing the variance here. It's a very small storefront. Um, and they're, they're putting up some very reasonable signage. Um, so when you are approving this, just be sure to include the variance request of seventy-nine point eight square feet uh, from the, the maximum square footage. Uh, yeah, I think I'll hand it off to, uh, our neighborhood planner and the project team.
Old. Um, there is a newer version with the ATM surround that is slightly higher. Okay. So that is, that's actually updated. That's the newer ATM surround with the higher elevation. The previous planning meeting we had was concerned with the Dollar Bank logos being too far apart compared to the transom window as to the ATM surround. Uh, with this new design of the ATM surround, it did raise it up so that it is closer to being in line with what is over the door. Um, we are asking for the ATM surround. We are asking for the blade sign. We are asking for the transom window sign and we are asking for the, uh, electronic message center sign, which actually will be installed inside the building, but it will be visible through the glass. So we included it in our presentation. You have the next slide. This is a, just a two-dimensional view of the same thing. Uh, with the ATM surround, the transom, the blade sign and the gray area is the E, EMC. But we are not supplying it. We are not installing it. We're just presenting it as a total package. Next slide, please. This is a shop drawing of what the blade sign will look like. Uh, it will be attached to a recessed column of the building and will stick out for traffic and pedestrian traffic. Next slide, please. This is the ATM surround. The background will be illuminated. And the surrounding border will be non-illuminated. Next slide, please. These are the general colors that we will be using. Up top will be, the blade sign will be constructed of aluminum painted and translucent vinyl and translucent acrylics. Uh, the transom window, which is the bottom portion of this, will be similar in same colors with white vinyl and blue translucent material. Next slide. These are just pictures of the surrounding area. Um, and some of the other signs and the, the neighborhood, basically. I believe the rest of it is just our engineering.
Yeah, this was, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. This was reviewed with Downtown Flats, uh, last week. Um, hopefully pretty simple, um, simply here for the exceedance in the sign allotment for the variance. Um, the applicant has already met the condition about, uh, raising the logo up. So we're in full support. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, as you know, for the, um, when we have sign and variances, you actually in the motion and someone will do it, have to read the actual, um, amount of square footage that we're giving. So can you go back to that side there?
Seven nine point eight square feet.
There you go.
Uh, with the, with the new ATM surround, it's slightly changed. Um, as that shows forty-five point six square feet for that previously designed ATM surround. The newer one is actually smaller. It's forty-two point six five. So we're actually requesting less of a variance with a smaller.
We'll give it to you just in case. How's that? All right. You wanna, uh, someone want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve DF two, twenty twenty-five, uh, dash forty-one Dollar Bank sign, uh, with the needed variance, uh, with increased square footage of seventy-nine point eight square feet.
A motion and a second called a roll.
Yes.
Curry? Yes. Sergeant?
Yes.
Life?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries. I actually really like it. It's gonna be cool. And it's like light, like it has a, a nice lightness, the kind of blue and some transparency. I'm glad those digital sign is actually inside, not outside, you know, so it looks great. So thank you.
Thank you.
Um, all right, we have mandatory referrals. We got, I think, four of them. Um, first one is, um, designating, uh, John Marshall High School, the old John Marshall High School as a Cleveland landmark, one, three, two, one, two, zero, two, five. Who is staff presenting this one?
Yes.
Good morning.
Uh, my name is Jessica Beam. I'm usually in the landmarks commission meetings, so it's a nice change.
Welcome.
One of the landmarks commission staff. So I am here to talk about the, uh, old John Marshall High School building. It is located at one, five, one, four, nine Lorraine Avenue, proposes ordinance one, three, two, one, dash twenty twenty-five. Uh, this designation is presented at the request of Award Seventeen Councilmember's life and, um, is located.
You go.
Yeah.
What? It comes. No? Keep going. It's fine.
Command will step down to the back.
Okay. Well, we'll just keep going. Yeah. Keep going.
Um, yeah, so it's, it's located at the, um, corner of Lorraine Avenue in today's West one fifty-second street. Um, however, it goes back way before, um, West Park. Uh, neighborhood was there, was the Village of West Park and before, you know, the city of Cleveland incorporated that area. So a brief background of the West Park neighborhood is needed to describe this impactful building. Um, in eighteen oh seven, township number seven, arranged number fourteen, was sold to land developers. And the name Rockport Township was coined. Um, the area developed as significant stagecoach, um, rail and streetcar lines went through the corridor crossing Lorraine Avenue. Most development was up north along Detroit, but Lorraine was a main thoroughfare through that area. As future cities developed or incorporated around it, the Rockport Special School District constructed District School number one um, by eighteen sixty-seven, located just west of today's Strickland Road. Um, high school classes were held on the second floor of the building as long as municipal offices in the building. Um, so by eighteen eighty, there were four primary schools in the general West Park area, but no separate secondary school. Um, the building, um, shown here, District School number one, eventually became the town hall and jail until it was damaged and sold. And they built a new town hall in that location in the nineteen tens. So as this corner of, uh, Rockport developed, um, Rockport Hamlet was then organized in eighteen ninety-two.
Thank you.
Um, so they started our building. This is actually the beginning of the old John Marshall High School building. It was a four-room, uh, two-story masonry structure built with popular Victorian and Gothic architectural elements. Cost of schools around eight thousand dollars at that time. Um, today that'd be about three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the Rockport Special School District didn't have a set district architect. They hired out, um, to local firms for their designs. And so the eighteen ninety-nine school plans were announced to be found in the Cleveland office of EJ Schellentrager. But it's not clear at that time if his architectural firm, uh, Century Architectural Company was involved. Um, and the firm was well-known in the Cleveland area for residential construction. They put out many books with all their houses. But it's not known if they actually were involved in the school, uh, instruction. So that building, keep that in mind. It is still standing. Under quotes, um, it's not easily recognizable with the variety of additions added over time and changes to the windows. So the pictured side view in the top left, um, is today's building and will show the different, different additions added over time. The remaining elements of that first school can be found in the middle section of the current building with clear changes in windows as they needed more exit routes and, you know, fire escapes and things like that. Uh, the name of the school was changed to Lincoln High School sometime around nineteen oh five. And then they also used the name Rockport Village High School. Uh, the area, just in general, also switched back and forth between the names of Rockport Village and the Village of West Park um, in the early nineteen hundreds. So just a lot of different names happening. So as the area grew and expanded, in nineteen ten, a rear addition was added with a flat roof. And so that's the back portion of today's building. That was designed by Cleveland architecture firm Bonard and Parson. Um, and it was built in the same style as the original. Um, there is connections of Bonard with Cleveland Architectural Company and the earlier possible architect. Um, possibly the district going just to the same business again. Um, new fire escapes were added to the sides of the building for additional emergency exits. And the school was also renamed West Park High School or West Park Lincoln High School. And they did purchase additional land behind the school for future expansion because at this time the Village of West Park, uh, was expanding. And then the, uh, city of West Park was established in nineteen twenty-one. So it just kept growing along with the city. Um, a bit about the architects, uh, William A. Bonard and Raymond Parson were principals of the architecture firm Bonard and Parson. Uh, the farm was arc, active between nineteen oh five and nineteen thirty-two. They had offices located on Euclid Avenue in downtown Cleveland. Both architects off their mark in Cleveland and the wider northeast Ohio, uh, communities with their designs. Um, in West Park, they also designed the replacement town hall, which was known as First District Police Station in the nineteen tens, um, demolished in the early two thousands. And we also have a, another Cleveland landmark, um, the Fellowship Baptist Church of Christ or Grace Evangelical Lutheran Church on East Fifty-Fifth, and that was designed by them as well. With our building, it expanded again. Um, graduation numbers hit double digits for the first time, um, in West Park High School's history in nineteen sixteen. And that was when they also built on to the front of the building. This new addition may have also been designed by Bonard and Parson, um, and had many classical elements with a bell tower, pedimented entry, dentil molding and wide arched windows. Uh, nineteen nineteen, a separate gym to the rear was constructed with a covered walkway connecting the buildings. And even with the additions, the school did not have enough space as the population of West Park continued to grow. Um, by nineteen twenty-two, the athletic field existing behind the building was taken over by the addition of portable classrooms. Those portal classrooms were not intended to stay, but they remained on the site of West Park, um, high school for another decade. So nineteen twenty-three was a busy year in just the general West Park neighborhood. Uh, the city of West Park was annexed into the city of Cleveland at that time. And West Park High School is renamed John Marshall High School, um, to fit the naming tradition of Cleveland schools. The central bell tower was removed and a new roof was put on. They added a library to the school for the first time in nineteen twenty-five, as well as exterior fire alarm boxes. Um, the library is then removed, um, in nineteen twenty-nine to add space for classrooms and offices. The students, um, had the luxury of walking down the street to the West Park Library, uh, which was newly constructed, uh, which was a shorter walk than the half mile to the Washington High School Athletic Fields, which is where all of their athletic fields were since it was all portable classrooms in the back of their site. Continued growth meant a very tight school. Um, and so they added even more portable classrooms to the site between nineteen twenty-nine and nineteen thirty-one. And they announced the long-awaited new high school, expanded high school on West one fortieth in nineteen twenty-nine. So you can see all the students kind of packed in there. Um, that was used as a publicity stunt to explain why they needed a, a bigger school. And so they created the new John Marshall High School. Um, ground was broken in nineteen thirty. It opened in nineteen thirty-two. It was designated as landmark in two thousand and five and then demolished in twenty thirteen, uh, for the construction of the new John Marshall campus, um, which was completed in twenty fifteen. And so that is still very, um, active and, and busy school for that neighborhood. But our property was left abandoned. Um, it was known as the old John Marshall High School, uh, once it closed in nineteen thirty-two. An article in the Plain Dealer showed the auction of portable classrooms with some of them going for a hundred fifty to two hundred dollars, which is around four thousand dollars today. Um, newspaper articles in the nineteen thirties discussed the building's possible use as another school, converting into housing or storage. One possible or partially realized use for old John Marshall was by the West Park branch of the YMCA. The West Park Y, um, was formerly organized in nineteen thirties, late nineteen thirties and used, uh, the separate gymnasium and cafeteria buildings on the site. Um, the Cleveland Board of Education let them use it for free and they eventually sold the site to the wa, to the Young Men's Christmas Association of Cleveland in nineteen forty-four. Um, the YMCA originally had plans to reuse the entire site for their use. Um, but instead, um, used the sale of the site in nineteen forty-six to help fund the development of their new building just a block or so away, which is still standing. This kind of transitioned the building into a, um, more commercial use. Um, the Leopold's Furniture, um, took over ownership of the building when the YMCA left. Uh, Leopold Brothers Furniture or Leopold's Fine Furnishings, as it's known today, began in eighteen fifty-nine with Henry Leopold establishing his first store on Lorraine Avenue and West Thirty-third in Ohio City. He made furniture for Cleveland shipbuilders, homes, businesses and made caskets. Uh, he moved twice to other locations along Lorraine between Fulton and West Thirtyth and had what was once deemed the largest furniture store in Cleveland by nineteen oh six. The family business decided to move further west and so they took over the old John Marshall building, added the beautiful signage on the front and, um, used the high school classrooms as staging for their furniture, um, to create a unique shopping experience, um, for their visitors. Um, so Leopold's Furniture did not use the rear part of the site, um, the, the build, the portable classrooms were removed and the gymnasium was demolished. And so they did a lot split of the property in the forties and fifties with retail along Lorraine and then residential, uh, further along West one fifty-second. New apartment buildings were built in the late nineteen fifties where that original gym and athletic field are. And so you can see there's four apartment buildings to kind of fill that space right there. As they lost all of that parking and space to the rear of the site and car-centered architecture was the new, um, popular choice, Leopold's made changes to their buildings to fit in with their business needs. They added an additional five thousand square feet to the building, um, with the one-story addition in around nineteen sixty-one. Uh, they also added additional parking to the front, um, along Lorraine. And they continued to expand, um, as a business, eventually per, um, beginning a second store in, in, um, Brexville in nineteen seventy-three. And a little less than a dec, a little more than a decade later, they closed the Cleveland store to focus fully on the Brexville location, uh, which is still in use today by Leopold's Fine Furnishings and still, um, owned and operated by the family. With our building, um, it then became, you know, a little bit less used. Um, it was sold in nineteen eighty-six to Bill Lake Buick. Between nineteen eighty-six and twenty thirteen, the site was primarily used for car sales. Um, the building was not in use, boarded up over time, um, covered with ivy and used for a car lot. There's a lot of car dealerships in that area and so a lot of them just use it for parking. Um, in the twenty thirteen, building sold again and the front addition was reopened as Glass Block Headquarters. The new owners began to take care of the building and replaced windows or introduced glass block in many of the original window openings. And then they started doing updates and maintenance on the building, uh, once again. In twenty nineteen, it reopened as the wash house and cafe and old John, old John Marshall lofts. Um, they added a small addition to the east of the nineteen sixty-one section for accessibility, adding a ramp to the building and, uh, made improvements for the storefront for the new use. Uh, they had new windows, window openings and minimal changes to the historic building, um, beyond, you know, window and door installations, mostly reusing the existing window. mostly reusing the existing window openings. So this very unique building has been nominated under the criteria that it exemplifies the heritage of Cleveland and West Park in particular, and the location of building represent a familiar and longstanding feature of the neighborhood. The school additions are representative typical institutional architecture at the time, and its most recent large addition was constructed in the early nineteen sixties and representative of a shift to more car-focused architecture that we saw at that time with adoptions to the building as it evolved with the owner's needs. And so there's a few changes. Most of the window openings are existing as they were prior to the furniture company coming in nineteen forties. And it's very significant as one of the last remaining municipal and educational buildings that predates annexation and the City of West Park. And so it's one of the last ones or one of the few that we have for that area. The development and growth of the school building is a study of growth and development in West Park and in that corner of Cleveland. And doesn't mean the building as a Cleveland landmark will solidify and preserve the wide-ranging history of the building. That's continued to provide resources to the neighborhood, first as a school for over thirty years, and then as a home for local businesses to adapt and grow for forty years and counting, telling the story of the development of the West Park neighborhood. So with our process, the Cleveland Landmarks Commission nominated this building as a landmark in January twenty twenty-five. They held a public hearing regarding the designation on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. At the hearing, we had Councilman Slife provide support, as well as a representative from the West Park Historical Society that spoke on the significance and history of the building, as well as supporting the designation. We also had a representative from the owner and the owner speak on the effort and work put into the building and concerns about a burden created by landmarking. Both the owner and the representative for the owner opposed the nomination or designation at that time. After the public hearing, Landmarks Commission moved to continue the designation process, which I'm here today. And so it's a very unique building. It's one of the last kind of vestiges of Old West Park that we have. And so I am available to answer any questions about the nomination.
First, when you landmarks in the future give any storytelling time, we should have cookies and milk present. Because I love your story. I love these stories.
Noted.
So I do have a question. If the building owner is opposed to it, how do you landmark? How does that work? How did the legality of that situation work out?
For our process, part of our process is reaching out to get consent for the owner. If we do not receive consent from the owner, that goes to a public hearing. And then from that public hearing, we're able to continue moving forward if it is approved from that point. So it is kind of written into our process. Sometimes we don't have owner's support. They either oppose it or are not even participating in the process at all, and we're still able to do that.
And I could maybe characterize that a little as well. I think, yeah, I see two benefits to the landmark designation. One is to preserve buildings. It's, I think, been widely used in the past to try to save buildings that are in need of saving. I don't think that's the case here. There's a secondary benefit to landmarking, which is to simultaneously celebrate the neighborhood's heritage. There's, to my best of my knowledge, only two landmarks in the ward that I represent. So this is something that has not been pursued large in the neighborhood and then something that the Historical Society and I have identified as a shared goal. Also, the cities, there's a difference between the cities designation and the federal designation. The federal designation comes with many, many strings, but the cities designation, the benefit that I see of it is that it opens up the property owner to tax credits and other resources that are available, especially at the state level that are otherwise unavailable. This building's already in a designer view district. There's nothing about this designation would require any immediate alterations. However, if there were alterations moving forward, which there already have been many to date, and it's, I think, worth expressing gratitude to the property owner. You can see the evolution of the of the building over time and how, especially with the front addition, the back was sort of boarded up, and they have taken a lot of time and energy into bringing life into the building. My goal is to underscore that effort, to provide additional financial resources while simultaneously acknowledging its value to the neighborhood. I will say it's sort of funny because when this is coming up as the Old John Marshall, there's a lot of confusion because people said Old John Marshall was demolished. There's not even a lot of recognition in the neighborhood that this was the, I guess, original John Marshall High School. And as we look to kind of celebrate West Park's heritage and I think West Park's either West Park and then Miles Heights were the last suburbs really annexed into the City of Cleveland, recognizing as we've rounded the corner into being part of Cleveland for over a century that there are ways that we can continue to tell the story of West Park and Cleveland together. So I'm happy to answer any questions any of you have. I know this is probably a point of particular interest for August, who's a John Marshall grad. But I'm happy to, but not at this building.
All right. Do we have a motion from the councilmen?
Madam. Madam. Madam Chair, I move to approve ordinance number thirteen twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, as submitted landmarking the Old John Marshall High School.
Second.
Your motion, a second, call the roll.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Whitfield.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next mandatory referral is one three one six two zero two five. This is authorizing the Director of Parks and Recreation to execute a deed easement granting to Cedar Redevelopment Phase Four LLC. This is located at East Twenty-Sixth Street between Central and Community College. And so welcome.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna excuse myself.
Okay.
Indirectly connect.
Okay. We have a recuse all from Commissioner.
And Madam Chair, before they start the presentation, I'd also recommend that we take this one and the following unnumbered ordinance together because they relate to the same project.
Okay. So we'll take the unnumbered ordinance, which is next, together. We'll need separate motions. So go ahead.
Hey, everyone. This is Mikel John Baptiste from Resilience Capital Projects, here on behalf of Parks and Recreation. This is to authorize Director of Parks and Recreation to grant easement over city-owned land to Cedar Redevelopment Phase LLC. The Cedar Redevelopment LLC is essentially leasing this land from CMHA, right? Yeah, and this is on parcel number one oh three two seven zero two zero, which is piece of this land is going to be on the city's parkland, and but the majority of it is going to be on the CMHA's land. So is our presentation on there or no? Is it not up there?
Okay, okay. It was pretty straightforward. I got the picture of the fire lane easement. Majority of it is going to be definitely on the Yeah, majority of it's going to be on the CMHA site, right?
Yes.
Got the fire lane easement right there. The development is already happening. It's almost complete. How far is it from completion?
We have three of the buildings that are, two are done, one's almost done, and the two that are close to that are scheduled to be complete in March. The fire lane was required because the building that borders all the way at the back didn't have access to fire. So we worked with the Parks District to have a solution with the fire marshal.
Next, I got a photo of what it looks like over there right now.
And the fire lane is complete. The parks have completed it. Army. More excited. This is a long journey to redevelop this whole section, so.
And previously, CMHA and the city did a land swap to be able to give Central Recreation more land. If you go back one, you can see how CMHA granted us this land adjacent to the Central Recreation Center. And we inadvertently also granted them some land so they could develop this housing site. So it's kind of a win-win for both sides because Central was, the Recreation Center was pretty landlocked previously.
Yeah, the park is complete now, too.
We already approved this, so this is just to make it possible for the
The easement.
So commission members, we need to do them separately, though. And one is unnumbered. So we need to do, well, actually, both.
And Chair, there is some additional information relating to the second one. If you want to move forward with the first, that's fine.
I'll move approval of ordinance thirteen sixteen twenty-five.
Second.
Luca recuse Curry.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Whitfield.
Yes.
Second one, which will give us more of the unnumbered. And it's meant to think the better urban renewal plan, respect the permanent parcel on area boundaries. Go ahead.
Yeah, nineteen fifty-eight, the St. Vincent Renewal Urban Renewal Plan was initiated to address blight in the Central and other communities across Cleveland. This plan did somewhat of like an eminent domain. And from this, we were able to have authority over this area and have somewhat deed restrictions on certain land. And when the City of Cleveland did this land swap with CMHA, we essentially swapped out some land that was originally parkland and allowed them to redevelop it. So when CMHA is trying to get clear title with their funders and different people on that matter, the deed restrictions come up saying that the Office of Community Development and also the Department of Planning has authority over this to take this property back if we find necessary. So for CMHA and their funders to not have these issues anymore, we want to not completely amend the whole plan, but just amend the specific parcel that they are developing land on so that their funders can get clear title.
And this is because, for you guys, historically, we have very rarely allowed the development of park land.
Yeah.
So it's on rare circumstances that my seventeen years on this commission, there's only one other time I've seen it. This makes sense.
Yeah.
So it does. But the deed restrictions are there, and this is to really make sure to kind of
Yeah.
Prevent the development of precious city-owned parkland, but this one makes sense. So I understand it. And we have a motion.
Madam Chair, I motion to ordinance number thirteen sixteen.
No, it's twelve. It's unnumbered.
Unnumbered ordinance for the releasing of parcel number one oh three dash twenty-seven dash oh twenty-one from St. Vincent's Urban Renewal Plan.
We have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Curry.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Whitfield.
Yes.
Motion carries. You guys have moved fast because I remember seeing the design of this one. It was like bam.
Feel fast to us a lot of times, but we are trying, you know.
All right, we have a last mandatory referral, which is unnumbered also. Authorizing the Director of City Planning to enter into professional services contract for the Form-Based Code Pilot Program. Welcome, Shannon.
Good morning again. So today's kind of an exciting day. We are about seventeen months past the Form-Based Code adoption. And so I just want to give you a quick update and kind of run through what we're looking forward now that we've had some experience with applications coming in in the Form-Based Code. And obviously, as we talked about previously, there'd be amendments. You know, our current code, the old cumulative Euclidean code has been around for about a hundred years, and we're still amending it to this day. And so within the seventeen months, we've had about a hundred and fifteen permits come in. I will say that this data is a little bit off, just because with the new permitting system, we are allowed, we are able to capture a lot more specific data than we were previously with the regular Excela. But it is generally about right in terms of it. Eighty percent of the permits have been residential, whereas twenty percent has been commercial. And that's basically around the same about with new construction, right? We've had twenty-three new construction projects and ninety-two alterations. So you could think like house additions or alterations to buildings. And so one of the telling things here is the permit turnaround time, which was one of the main goals, was efficiency in the process is about thirty-five days, which is huge comparatively, right? Now, granted, some of these projects, like the new construction projects, had started prior to the adoption of the Form-Based Code. But once they submitted those permits, we were able to, you know, move them quite quickly. There's been total fees of about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand collected by building and housing in these areas and sixty-one point three million in total job values. And this dashboard, our GIS specialist is working to make it public with more data capture based on that report that we are required to do every six months.
What's previous turnaround phase?
Turnaround is anywhere between ninety to six months, ninety days to six months.
What was the average, though? Like, if this is thirty-five days, was that like a hundred days?
Probably. I can bring it up next time, but yeah, I probably should have asked him to.
I mean, that's like a three times increase.
Yes, exactly.
Extraordinary.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, so that's exciting. So the purpose of the request here is to introduce new district types to accommodate uses that are not well-stored today, such as automotive, true industrial, entertainment, waterfront, and transit-oriented development. So transit-oriented development, the urban flex and the urban node districts are moving those goals of more density along our corridors, but there's some modifications that could probably occur. We want to build on lessons from these districts and refine the provisions around administration. There can be a lot of ambiguity that I'll talk about here, the street scape easement requirements. How do we deal with like accessory dwelling units and the first floor residential restrictions that were put into the urban innovation districts and the urban node districts in a pre-COVID world? We want to address the conflicts with the fire code that oppose barriers to infill and adaptive reuse in built-out contexts like our city. And then we want to create a more framework for predictable, user-friendly standards. So we want to continue what we have, but also support more housing variety, flexibility of emerging uses that are continuing to be new and resilient and in a high-quality public realm. So I'll just kind of walk through each of the goals. So the administration and usability, the usability is great for the public, right? In terms of administration, there can be a little bit of ambiguities in the sense that what you see here is our existing cumulative Euclidean code that we've always had is cumulative in nature. Meaning that you can have less restrictive uses in a more, excuse me, more restrictive uses in less restrictive districts. So single-family and like retail districts. One of the issues in the Form-Based Code is when you have an existing house in, say, a community district, what standards do you apply? You wouldn't want to apply, for instance, the C-three standards to a typical house that's just adding an addition, or some of the larger lots that have a house and they want to add two more units. And so how does that actually work in terms? Obviously, we apply the house scale restrictions to the community at this time. But having more clarity is what we're looking for in terms of this RFP. The other is addressing, one of the biggest things that keeps coming up is the ground floor height and residential restrictions. So the required ground floor heights, that requirement, we're constantly giving that administrative modification, if you will. And then the active use thresholds, really kind of clarifying that, is that nine feet in depth across the entire frontage? Or is that just, you know, are there modifications for that? And then the prohibitions on residential on the first floor that I just spoke about is interesting because there's been some projects that have come through, like a quadplex on Lake that has been historically, for the last thirty years, been essentially just sitting, right? And we had somebody come in that wanted to renovate it, but they didn't want to tear it down.
Question on the administrative discourse or approvals concerning story height. You're talking about, everyone wants to do this?
Yes.
And I bet you it's in affordable housing.
There are a lot of those, yes. That's the number one complaint under affordable housing because the state, you know, has all its requirements.
I disagree with.
Maybe on the same page as you, but I think we need to explore it more.
Yeah. Let me explain that a little bit because this came up in all the public forums. I always try and use the lens that when we're designing for people who have less and don't have the means and mobility that we do, we should give them more. In other words, adding another foot on the floor is not going to break the bank, and it creates a better environment. The windows can be bigger and create decent, really decent and affordable housing in that way. And you can find, you can find other ways to reduce your costs across the And you can find, you can find other ways to, to reduce your costs across the project. That, I just wanted to explain that, thank you.
Yeah, and so I, I can explain that also as it relates to like the ground floor elevation. So we have a lot of folks that are coming in and they want to do ADA accessible housing and things of that nature. So this comes up in that as well. And then additionally, you know, when they start talking about the heights, you know, worrying about the fire code apparatus conflicts that I'm about to go to. And so really trying to figure out where we can find a good compromise, but not decrease the design for all people.
You talk about all the issues. What we're approving today is you want to hire somebody to help you.
That's correct, and these are the, the issues that we want.
Issues, but you're, what we're approving in this administrative approval is your ability to, to go out and hire somebody.
A consultant.
Come back with.
Yes.
What are the solutions to these issues that you're raising, the kind of trade-offs, right?
Yes.
Got it.
Sorry. Yeah, so the amendments that we will be requesting or expanding, yes, I'm just taught, walking through some of the issues that we found in the past seventeen months and why we're looking for the ability to contract to hire a consultant to, to assist. And as we think about expansion, because the mayor is really excited about wanting to expand the Form-Based Code across the city.
Shannon, I think we've been looking at Form-Based Code for a long while. And I think you've done a remarkable job with it. You really have. I uh, didn't think it would take, take quite this long, but I now see all of the pieces and parts and nuances that uh, uh, have been a real challenge.
Yeah.
And I want to thank you for being so diligent and sticking through this and for your work which you put forth.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Um, the other thing is thinking about expanded district types and uses. Um, so we want to introduce revised districts to capture uses not well-suited, um, or well-adressed in the specifically automotive-oriented uses are prohibited in the current districts. Um, and so when you think about a good zoning code that provides a place for everything and everything in its place, um, so a good example is in this corner here that you see at the bottom, that is actually an auto repair shop, but you wouldn't really think of it as the typical Cleveland auto repair shop, right? And so with good standards put in place, those things are possible to fit in seamlessly. Um, and then really as it relates to like the real industrial uses, so the current code allows for good um, industrial flex, adaptive reuse, maker spaces, but when we're talking about expanding the code across the city, it doesn't really address true um, industrial uses, if you will. Um, and then the other, when you think about transit-oriented development districts, one of the big things is the waterfront, thinking about maybe a waterfront or riverfront district aligned with the vision for the valley and the lakefront planning. Um, you know, Cleveland is very different in the fact that most of our river is surrounded by private industrial uh, property owners. And so how do we um, really think about zoning for the lakefront, but also the riverfront? Um, and the emerging uses of artisan production and hybrid work-live options. And then the next is evaluating um, the street scape easement requirement um, functions as it relates to built corridors. So that street scape easement works really good, um, where you don't have a lot of built-in uh, transit corridors such as Detroit or Lorraine, um, but it doesn't, it's kind of not really working out um, for our built-out corridors in terms of uh, conflicts with um, traffic and engineering versus with um, even property owners wanting to even put the pedestrian easement on their property. Um, and so looking at maybe there's different standards uh, by corridor type, right? Um, and then one of the things that's come up and you guys have seen here is the stringent fire code application has created barriers for infill and adaptive reuse projects across the city, and this is no less the case in the Form-Based Code districts, right? And so really working with a consultant to come up with some creative code acceptable strategies um, that balance life safety requirements with our urban form goals. Um, and this is just giving an example of, you know, the real stringent um, application is really looking for full vehicle or access around everybody, like you see on the left versus, you know, we're really dealing with smaller sites here in the city. And so how can we come up with strategies, whether that's fire strategies or equipment strategies, things of that nature?
Would that include, you know, I don't want to get too detailed.
Yeah.
Would that include sitting down with the fire department and having a meaningful discussion? A lot of what they do is at their discretion, a fire code's written that way, and so.
Yes, and so we've already started that process in a lot of ways, and so we're hoping to continue moving forward and finding, you know, a good solution, especially with the fact that we have all the above-ground utilities in front of every property in the city, just about. Um, and then lastly, really, and these are a lot of technical updates, um, reviewing door spacing, transparency, the amenity space, parking, um, location and screening, um, EV charging and garage placement, and then recommended adjustments to balance the functionality with design quality. Um, and really where, you know, where the code is silent and we're having to apply the old code and trying to find a better solution overall. Um, and so that's really uh, the update.
How much is the contract?
I'm going to defer to the uh, to direct immersive man because she has all the numbers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The way that we're structuring this contract is for an initial body of work as Shannon has laid it out and then um, sort of ongoing annual options to renew on an on-call or task order basis as we're moving into the comprehensive plan update with the goal of mapping additional Form-Based Code districts in more places across the city. Um, this is an initial step in, in creating a longstanding relationship with a consultant that can really help us through the evolution of change. Um, the initial contract will be for one hundred twenty-four thousand, I believe one hundred and eighty-four dollars, which is what we had in our professional services budget for twenty twenty-five, but we are asking council to give us um, the opportunity with additional legislative authority in those option years to go back to council and continue to add resources as we move forward.
Can I clarify, uh, since the Cleveland Foundation funded the original work, some of the work, we don't have any remaining money, grant money that is going to this.
That's correct, this contract will be funded through the general fund.
Okay, I might still abstain just because of that, but I can stay. I just wanted to be sure that this isn't, there's none left over. Okay, go ahead.
I just, I just like to make a comment on the, the ground floor residential aspect because it's been something I've been thinking about a lot. Um, in Med Hill, who used to be at Cleveland State, one of his, one of his talking points, and it sounds like it could be true, so let's just pretend like it is, is that Cleveland's population decline is half out migration and half smaller household size. So when you look at a neighborhood like mine, we have effectively zero residential vacancy in Ward seventeen. Still, the population, I looked at old census data, there were fifteen thousand more people living in what is currently Ward seventeen in nineteen seventy because people don't have six kids anymore. So what I am, one of the things that I am trying to generate interest on is infill residential development, especially along our commercial corridors where there are a lot of opportunities theoretically for development, but the land's not necessarily in the hands of people that are looking at that right now. Because as I see it, the neighborhood is essentially as commercial space for fifty percent more people than we have. And I am less interested in bringing in uh, new, like if we were able to bring in like a five-story apartment building, I'm less interested in having ground floor retail in that new building as I am in having new people to support existing retail in the neighborhood. Uh, so I, I know that every location's going to be different, but I know and I understand why it's been a goal of planning for so long, but I would, I'd just love for us to be able to have the nuance or appreciation that in many aspects, and especially since we live in a world where people just, you know, buy things on the internet or go to Target, pick up like, what do we actually need in commercial space? And how do we need to, that might be a better used for handicap accessible or otherwise residential space so that we can support our existing commercial district. So that's just something I, I want to, I want to just make sure that that is something that we consider, and I think that this could build around that, that, that kind of philosophy, at least for a neighborhood like mine.
Yeah, piggyback, Charlie, uh, you made a really good point. Also, I'm kind of geeky, I always drive around the city to see how projects turn out. And just about every apartment building that's not in a, in a note where there's a lot of activity or retail, you always have vacant storefronts because they cannot lease that space. And so if we start looking about making, not mandating some sort of retail, but looking, basing it where it is located versus being sort of the blanket statement, you understand what I'm saying?
Like a Lake Avenue, like, like Lake Avenue has ground floor apartments and it clearly works well. And there's, I think, a, a, a hybrid of Lorraine Avenue and Lake Avenue could actually add some greenery and so, so there, I just, I, I think we're all on the same page or understand what I'm getting at, but I'd love, I'd love for us to think through if there's opportunities to do that instead of pushing more commercial space that I don't think we need, frankly.
Just ready to have.
Yep, and that's one of the things that we've yet kind of talk, talk about, you know, in a, especially in a post-COVID world, we have a lot of retail or folks that went more towards live-work kind of situations and how can we effectively uh, use the space that we have, but in the infill development, like you both said, um, how does that work? And how do we put eyes on the street, um, but also understand that the market may not support all retail on the first floor? And there's two good examples of that have come through in the permitting process, so the Key Bank on Crenshaw in the Huff neighborhood, or the old bank, maybe not Key Bank. Um, but you know, the, the applicant wanted to turn it into a quadplex, you know, and the first floor was an urban node district, so it can't technically have retail. So we asked them to put active space in the first nine feet as the intent is to put eyes on the street. So maybe that's your leasing office or gym or something as an amenity. Um, and then use the apartment, or the rest of the building for your apartment, so they don't have to tear down that old building.
I think little old ladies on the first floor would get eyes on the street.
So, but yeah, that's all I have for you.
We have a motion. Want to make your first motion? Go.
I'm going to move for approval.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, call the roll.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, motion carries, thank you, look forward to that. Um, if, look at the administrative approvals, there are four, I'm going to need to abstain from the last one because uh, we are uh, invested in this project, Cleveland Foundation, not me personally. So um, I'll just need a motion for the administrative approvals and note my abstention on number four.
Okay.
Second.
I, I can't.
Oh, I will, I will, I will make a motion for the administrative approvals, abstaining on none of them.
Second.
Um, motion and a second, call the roll.
Fluker?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sergeant? Is gone, life?
Yes.
And Whitfield?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, um, I know there's.
For information, I probably get to the airport, my flight is going, which I'm very excited about. So thank you, hopefully I'm.
Nice questions.
This one is smart government.
I know you'd rather be, you'd rather be here than the airport, I'm sure.
I am. Oh.
Alright, have a good trip.
Bye.
It's good to go.
Uh, button on the side?
Looks like it's working, it's just slow, or did you do that?
Yes, there's a.
There we go, alright, alright, we're good then.
Great, I'm happy to be your entertainment this morning, so thank you for having me. I put together this slide deck, this is a project we're working on actively with uh, again, my name is Matt Moss, I'm the Senior Strategist for Thiving Communities in the Mayor's Office and um, presenting some slides to you today on a project we're actively working on. This is legislation that's actively being drafted for introduction to council. And this is for us to do a better job of managing curb space and providing more opportunities for um, delivery companies, pickup and drop-off users, uh, just better loading and better enforcement and better management of limited curb space that we have. Uh, part of this work is building off of our Park Mobile program, but yeah, go ahead, Kelly.
Yeah, if I could just interrupt you, Matt, before you get fully into it, in some of our conversations with commission members, um, there have, but there's been interest expressed in getting some more contextual information about large-scale initiatives, goals of the Planning Commission in the city and how we're moving forward with things that impact the individual projects that come before the commission. So um, what we have been trying to do is sort of cultivate and bring forward special presentations like this when we have shorter agendas for context. As Matt said, this is legislation that will be introduced in council in, in upcoming sessions, so I expect that it may come back as a mandatory referral, but you'll have the context and so we can move more quickly through that when it comes at that time.
And furthermore, if there's questions I can't answer today, if at a certain, at a future point, I'd be able to come back to you with those answers as well. So without further ado, let's get into it. The, I have some slides up here to show you some of the challenges that we're facing. I think some of these will be familiar to you just in your day-to-day experience in the city of Cleveland and like the director mentioned, the products that you see that come through this body for designer view, for zoning, things like that. Uh, but these are some of the challenges we're seeing, particularly in downtown and some of our busier entertainment destination districts. We have uh, areas especially on Euclid Avenue where there's double parking, what happens is this obstructs the travel lanes and either forces cars to drive into the bus lane or uh, generally just confuses drivers. I have some other photos that'll further detail this. Uh, what it also does is it limits commercial access to the curb. You can see in some of these photos now that many companies, uh, businesses, whether it's delivery for their supplies for a restaurant or it's FedEx, it's UPS, it's the parcel delivery companies, they can't access the parking spaces that do exist because they're parked either all the time or to such a large degree or there just aren't sufficient loading zones in areas where there is quite a, quite a lot of commercial activity. They can't access that space because it's totally occupied, and so what they do is they double park. We also have low compliance with existing signed loading zones or areas that we've signed as no parking. This is particularly a problem on East Sixth Street downtown, for example. And because a lot of this behavior is for very short periods of time, typically thirty minutes or less, our only tool right now to enforce these, these, these rules, double parking or just even short-term parking or loading zones is, is manually. Uh, the divisional parking, I think, does a, a great job, especially with the implementation of Park Mobile of, of getting out there and enforcing the new parking rules that we've rolled out over the last year and a half or so. Uh, but again, because these trips are free, the, these incidents are frequent and short, it's very, there's a gap there in terms of our ability to enforce. But what that does is it creates a cumulative effect where uh, you know, as you'll see in some of these other images where uh, where, whether it's a valet zone on Superior Avenue, um, there's valet parking in the bumped-in area, but then trucks end up blocking additional lanes to load. Uh, this is an important picture too, because uh, this, this part of Superior will be transformed relatively soon into the Superior Midway. This is another photo just further down the street that shows some of that valet and parking activity is actually extending into the bus stop. Superior is a very busy bus corridor, and so this makes it difficult for buses to get to the curb, which is especially important if you're a transit rider with limited mobility, being able to get from the curb into the bus can be difficult when this type of behavior continues unabated. These are some photos, I, I have dozens of these photos, these are just a few that I, that I managed to, to upload and, and share with you today. Uh, this is again back on Euclid where because there's, there's bumped-in parking on Euclid, there's, there's a designated curb-created space for parking, uh, but because it's full all the time and we don't have loading zones there, delivery vehicles have to park where they, where they can find space and oftentimes they're blocking crosswalks. So this is a safety issue, this is a mobility issue, it's a general quality of life issue that we have downtown and in other areas of the city. The last one I have, this is again just illustrating that problem where we have delivery companies just parking in the travel lane because they literally have nowhere else to go.
I would like to point out, as a biker, it's going down Euclid Avenue scary when you get closer to downtown.
It's hairy for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not just biking, but just, no, in general, yeah, in general, that's true, you can put a vehicle.
And for what it's worth, I'll mention too that just anecdotally, when I find myself in this part of downtown, um, walking around, walking to a meeting or walking to go get lunch, if I see a delivery driver, I've talked to about three or four of them so far, uh, who are double parked or actively loading and just take their, get their opinion on, do you feel safe? Do you feel comfortable? All of them, for what it's worth, have said no, that this is not something that they enjoy doing, that, that it's not great for them, it's not a good experience for the, for the delivery drivers as well. And they would really like to get to the curb, but they don't have a choice, because it's not available. So these are the objectives just listed here for, for your benefit. Um, we want to reduce double parking and travel lane and obstructions, and we can use automated technology to do that. Uh, we want to improve traffic flow and safety, so we're not trying to improve speed, but just the ability for traffic to flow in the space that it's designed to be in. Um, we also have some issues too, this really impacts or can impact transit at certain times of day when a valet zone is, is overextending itself into the travel lane, people then drive in the bus lane, which means the health line can't arrive on time where it needs to be. And this is something that we work very closely with on RTA. It's not even necessarily about the speed of the bus, but if you're a transit rider and you need to make a connection, the reliability of that service, the bus arriving uh, when it's supposed to is really, really important. And this impacts that in a negative way. Uh, we also want to enhance on-street parking use and parking use oversight. A lot of times, especially in areas um, in the evenings or during lunchtime, things like that, the goal of on-street parking is for it to be available, for it to turn over, for you to have a space where you can pick up a, a food order, pick up your lunch. the goal of on-street parking is for it to be available, for it to turn over, for you to have a space where you can pick up a, a food order, pick up your lunch and go. And that's difficult in some of these areas, especially on Euclid Avenue downtown. And then we also want this as a core policy updates. Part of what this technology that I'm about to share with you can do is have us, it, it lets us collect better data on what's actually happening in real time. And we can adjust our policies to do that. And so why Park Mobile, for example, has been such a great leap forward is that we can, we have now flexibility in terms of how we adjust price, in terms of how much it costs to park at the curb. And so that means where there are areas that maybe are just around the corner from a high-demand area, we can price the higher-demand area higher and the lower demand lower to encourage people to say like, it's actually, I'll save a buck or two if I have to just walk around the corner. Whereas the space where it needs to be available for someone who's like, I'm in a rush or I need, I can't physically walk that far, for example, the goal is to always have a space available for someone and use price to regulate that. So what is our timeline roughly? Um, we want to get this rolling now between the end of this year and early next year. And so what that means is that we need to actually make some code changes in order to do this. Automated enforcement is prohibited by charter for moving violations. That means speeding and red light cameras. Uh, but it's not prohibited for non-moving violations. So that would be double parking, parking in a bus lane, uh, parking where you're not supposed to, staying too long in a loading zone, things like that. Uh, and so that's flexibility that we have now under state and, and, and city charter. And so all we need is legislation from council to authorize us to, the administration to do that. And so the goal would be to, uh, get that council authorization and then work with a vendor we've already identified to start implementing these zones with the camera technology, collecting data and then rolling out enforcement. So phase two would be something that we're calling smart loading areas. And this is an idea we're borrowing from cities like Pittsburgh and Philadelphia, where they actually create loading zones where companies, road, uh, rideshare companies, delivery companies, other road users, they're billed for their time at the curb. And the cameras are a way to not only invoice drivers who need to access that space, but to make it, make sure it's clear for them when they arrive that they know they have that space available. And so this technology allows us to do that. So here's a summary of the actual legislative changes that we're going to need. Uh, we need to permit automated enforcement of our parking regulations. We need to allow tickets for these types of violations to be issued by mail. Uh, we also want to increase our base fine amount from twenty-five dollars to sixty dollars. Sixty dollars is what we see in pure cities like Pittsburgh. And partly why we feel like we need to do this is especially during events, games downtown, it's actually cheaper to just park and eat the ticket than it is to park in a garage or park in a lot. And we have ample off-street parking downtown. And part of the problem is that our street parking isn't priced or, um, enforced at the level necessary to be commensurate with that cost of parking off-street. So the goal is to say, if you're here for a long time, go to a lot, go to a garage. The goal is for the curb space to be available for shorter intervals of time. And then the last piece is we actually would have language in the code that would allow us to, would define what a smart loading zone is and allow us to implement that with our, um, with public works. So here's a map, I'm happy to share this too in more detail if you'd like to take a closer look. Uh, these are some of the locations we identified as a phase one and phase two implementation. A lot of this is on Euclid, those are the photos I shared with you of, of, of the heavy problem areas that we, we observe. Um, and so this would be a rollout to test that. We also are looking at some additional locations around Public Square as well. Um, and then also where we recently made some traffic changes on Prospect and Huron. Um, that project did limit the amount of curb parking available just by nature of, of converting the street and creating the bike facility. And so what we need to do is better manage the limited space that we have. And managing it through time is optimal because it's, we're constrained by space. And so this technology will allow us to do that. Another area we want to collect information on and potentially enforce is in Ohio City. Ohio City, especially the Market District, is a pretty dense and active entertainment area. And we have issues with double parking here, we have issues where we don't have designated areas. Uh, in some cities, they call them, um, pickup and drop-off zones for rideshare, uh, companies to know exactly where to go. Um, this is another issue we have in the summertime in the flats as well. And from the conversations I've had with representatives from Uber and Lyft, if their drivers, if we give them a place to go, they will go there. They just need to know where that is and know that it's available. Right now, they don't have that. And just to give you a little more information, the last slides I have are the, about the technology and the vendor itself. The company we've identified, they're called Automodus. Uh, they create the software and the hardware for the actual automated license plate readers, they're called ALPRs. Uh, these are the devices that, and the software that create the zones. So green is good, red is bad. You can't stop or park where it's red, but you are allowed to stop and park where it's green. And this technology reads the license plate and can issue a ticket or send it to our Parking Violations Bureau, which is at our clerk of courts office, the municipal court, where they can issue the violation through the same process that happens when they get the ticket from either the police or from the Division of Parking. And so they're the vendor that provides the cameras and the software for us to do this in real time. And, uh, would really augment, this wouldn't replace the staff that we have that go out and do parking enforcement. It would just better augment and allow us to direct them in areas where this isn't, they wouldn't need to overlap, in other words, in terms of areas where we have automated enforcement versus where we need manual enforcement. Sure. It's a great question. Um, other cities? Yeah, and so, you know, there are cases where maybe you stop, it, it's two minutes, someone gets out of a car and you drive away. A lot of other cities like Pittsburgh, they have a grace period before they issue a ticket. Typically, it's between five and ten minutes. And that's something that we would also implement. The goal isn't to just catch people, it's not like one, you stop for one second and you get a ticket. The goal is, is those, is to enforce, you know, in that window of five minutes or longer. And that's also one of the benefits of the technology is before we set the policy, we can, we can collect information using the cameras to see like, what is the actual dwell time? Are there, how many people are stopping for a minute or less or five minutes or less versus five minutes or more? That'll let us dial this in rather than having a staff person sit there and count with a timer. The cameras just make that a whole lot easier to do.
I do want to interrupt the flow of your presentation because this is good and it's important. But, um, as I'm listening, this became
Yeah, could you just turn on your mic? No worries.
Yeah, I didn't want to disrupt your presentation, it is very good.
Thank you.
But as, as we move forward, I see these issues of parking and, you know, what, how long can we be in this red zone before we have a problem? And I'm sure you're gonna work that out, have a comment later, but I just wanted to interject at this point and so.
That's a great point, and, um, I don't know that I would have mentioned it unless you had asked, so thank you. Yeah.
Well, I have probably, uh, a, another point, but this, continue please.
Oh, I only have a few more, I promise. This is just an example of the technology side of what Automodus provides, so we can collect information not just based on vehicle type. Uh, they can also provide us information on just double parking incidents, uh, the amount of emissions that are happening because of idling or dwell time or people who can't actually. One of the challenges that we see is that when there isn't parking available, people circle the block looking for parking, which is just more, it's more traffic on our roads and it's more emissions into our environment. And that's something that this, this plan can help us address and, and hopefully resolve. Um, we can also understand just utilization and, and then eventually revenue as well. Um, and like I mentioned, they can break down, uh, the, the data by modality. So whether it's a car, van, a delivery vehicle, they can identify all of that. The, here just, it's just a high-level slide, and this, this is from our vendor, uh, in terms of what they've seen across cities that they've currently implemented. And below is just, uh, the logos of the cities that they're currently working in. Um, they have seen an increase in safety in, in just in terms of reducing double parking, which limits visibility, especially when it's in a crosswalk. Uh, congestion has gone down, they've seen higher turnover, which is a high priority of this as well. And then just a general reduction in carbon emissions from vehicles, being able to more efficiently move throughout congested environments. And I just have a few slides here that show, um, some results from Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh has been, I saw this presentation a few years ago at an NACTO conference by Pittsburgh's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. And that's what really sort of started this whole idea. And they've seen a, a huge decrease in double parking. Um, they've also seen some safety improvements as, as, and this is one, been one tool in their safety strategy and their Vision Zero strategy. Um, they've seen increase in rush hour traffic speeds, so not necessarily vehicle speed again, but just like the flow of traffic has gotten better because the road is more efficient. And, uh, they've seen a huge increase, seventy percent in curbside turnover. Philadelphia is another city that Automodus is active in, and they've seen some similar results. Um, what I like about this node is just the increase in commercial vehicle use of loading zones. That's really important, uh, because again, that creates that space where, where drivers can feel like they belong and that they're, they're safe and they're supposed to be there and they know it's available when they do arrive. So just some next steps, and I have some photos here of what the cameras and the install actually looks like. We want to finalize these locations and then, uh, get the legislation introduced. We've had some conversations with council already, including Councilman Slife. Are continuing to have conversations with council members on the various committees and just in the areas, the wards that we want to start with, with this pilot program. But with that, I'm happy to answer whatever questions you have.
Can this be integrated with the Park Mobile? In other words, you know, so you don't have two sort of softwares or, or procedures sort of parallel. And does, is that a way to integrate that? It, it becomes more of a wide, wider use.
That's a great question as well. Um, Automodus can integrate with Park Mobile. The, and so what they can do is they can also enforce our parking policies. And so what that means is like, if we have a zone that is, is, if, if we have a time-limited zone, like say you can only park for two hours because we're trying to encourage turnover, um, Automodus can enforce that. And they can integrate with that system. If you're, if you're, if your time has expired, they can also enforce that as well. That's not in our immediate plan right now, just because we want to be, um, intentional about how they integrate. And, um, the Park Mobile pro- program itself is currently being fully implemented to, even to this date. So yes, it's possible. We don't have any specific plans yet on, on how that would happen, but yes.
I think Park Mobile gives you an alert on your phone.
It does.
My only issue with Park Mobile is that there's no indication on the front end if you're in a zone where you can extend or if you're in a zone where you can't extend. I've been to a lot of meetings where people are suddenly frantically running out, trying to move their car 'cause they, we need, they need ten more minutes and they thought they could extend, yeah. Exactly, yeah. Or I don't think, I think it won't, if it ends, it won't let you re-up in the zone. Cause I tried that, I tried, I was, I was trying to run out and then ha, it wouldn't let me do it in the same zone.
We've heard that from users and, and I, I don't want to preempt Kim and her team, but we're, we're working on it. Yeah.
My, my one thought, and this is maybe a bit beyond this, but is there a way, and I would, would assume it would take legislation, especially in the bus lanes? Can we use RTA buses, cameras on RTA buses for automated ticketing in bus lanes? Less of a problem on lower Euclid, but as you get further out on Euclid, and then it's not a huge deal for traffic congestion, but the audacity with which people park in the bus lane on Clifton Boulevard really, really gets to me, uh, as, uh, so, so, but, but we, and as an occasional rider now of the fifty-five, it, it does become an issue as the bus is trying to weave in and out of cars. Lakewood, those, those Cuffner trucks are there at six-thirty in the morning in Lakewood, ready to tow you. But once, Cleveland doesn't have any sort of comparable enforcement. So if maybe we can discuss how to do that or how to use the RTA bus being inconvenienced as a way to take
Maybe you can get a camera on your car.
I'd be okay with that. Yeah, we live in a society.
One for my bike as well. Um, but I'm glad you mentioned that too, because RTA doesn't, they rely on our ordinances for, if, for their safety services, their police to enforce. And so by making these code changes, that, I believe, and it's not a conversation I've had with either RTA's lawyers or our lawyers, so, um, it's, it's something that would still need to be confirmed, but they rely on our policies for enforcement. And so by having this in our code, it would, it would take, it would make progress towards achieving that, that goal and implementing that, the tool like that.
And, and this is out, outside, um, I have an office in Shaker Square, and there's a building being torn down along Van Aken. And that parking lot's out of line, so there's really limited parking. So I parked on Moreland at a, at a meter, I fed it, and I unfortunately lost time. I took it. Now, it's not, it's not the fact that I got a ticket, I, I owned it and I paid for it, but it was just an empty envelope under my blade. So I'm thinking, is somebody paying a joke with, on me? And so is that the new land, they just put the envelope on your, on your car and not give you a ticket? This is question, I don't
Could have blown away, maybe it wasn't fully in the envelope.
No, it was raining, so maybe, I don't know. I just thought it was weird, I guess I was playing a joke.
Can you, uh?
I think the, the, a larger picture here, your comments, uh, one common theme is that I'm just calling it people training. Um, and that's across the board, that's, that's us as the drivers and who are parking cars and people who management, manage it, uh, the, the, the camera system and, and all those policies. And so I'll come back to another question, does any of this relate to what we do in form, form-based? Because I see this is becoming a larger, a larger piece, and we should not look at them as just two, two entities, but how do they integrate? Cause I think they do.
Well, I mean, the, the way at least I would answer that in part is, um, especially with the adoption of Cleveland Moves earlier this year and Mobility Plan, we do want to make and we are working towards and plan to make pretty significant changes to the built environment, whether it's the road itself or with the form-based code, with developers setting expectations on how we want this space to be designed. So it's important for us to explore and vet tools like this to be ready for those changes. Because in areas where we are having conversations right now and will have in the future with businesses, property owners, residents, transit riders, everyone about how that space is changing, we need to make decisions on, and, and on, on limiting or perhaps reducing the amount of street parking that we do have in some areas to make room for other things. And having tools like this to better manage the space that remains or that does get implemented perhaps in new areas or in new ways is the only way we were gonna succeed in, in, in changing the built environment in that way.
Yeah, I, I think that's important. You know, you, you, you acknowledge the issue and you're addressing that in, in your work, which is what's important. So we're not working in silos, we're actually working to, to create a comprehensive, uh, uh, plan, environment.
That's right.
I do like the concept of identifying where white rideshare should go, especially in, in more dense nodes and, and populated areas.
Yeah, thank you.
That is, it'll be clear, right? I know, I know to go to this spot as, as a rider and they know where to come.
Well, and they're being directed by technology anyway.
Exactly, so you know it's, it's all GPS, right?
And we can share this with the retro companies and they can input into their system to have their drivers know if, if they're picking up within a certain geography to go here. And then it also tells the, the customer too, this is where you go to pick up your ride.
Thank you, Matt, for the presentation. Thank you guys for the conversation. Um, things like this are very helpful as we continue to build out the policy and the approach.
Yeah, thank you. Nice job, both of you.
I believe all we have left on the agenda is the Director's Report, and I will keep it very brief. Um, welcome, Tony, to your first Planning Commission meeting. We're thrilled to have you here.
Thank you.
And look forward to many more. Um, and on that topic, we currently have a live job posting for two alternates for the Planning Commission. As you can see, we're missing a couple of colleagues here this morning, and alternates will allow us to, um, present a full table to applicants. So please encourage folks in your networks who may be interested to submit an application. I believe it's open for a couple more days at least. So we look forward to reviewing those and having more, um, people joining us in likely early twenty-twenty-six to help staff the Planning Commission, to help be on the Planning Commission.
Yes.
Um, that is all I have for a Director's Report today. I believe you are now filling our role as Chair, given that Chair Curry left. So, um, if you wouldn't mind walking us through adjournment, that would be great.
Well, thank you, Tony, for your insight, and I'm sure it'll all get better. Um, the meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.